I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for September 17th, 2013. I invite you to stand if you wish while Commissioner Williams introduces the person providing the invocation.
I'd like to invite to the podium Elder Stephen Skinner, the pastor of Faith Missionary Baptist Church in Bowling Green, to offer our invocation this evening.
I'd like to bow with me.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we come to Thee this evening with thankful hearts. Thankful, dear God, for the privilege that we can bow and call Thee our Heavenly Father. Above all other things, we thank Thee for Thy grace toward us and that You loved us to the degree that You sent Your only Son, that He walked among us, lived a perfect example before us, and then took upon Himself our sins and paid the penalty in full for us all. While we thank Thee for those rich spiritual blessings, we never want to fail to thank Thee for the temporal blessings that You give us. We thank Thee, dear God, for this great nation in which we dwell, that we call home. You know, dear God, each time that we leave our borders, that we yearn to return. And thank Thee, dear God, for the blessings that You have extended toward us. Ask Thee that You'd help us as a nation, that we would return, dear God, to our founding. We thank Thee, dear God, for the privilege of living in this community. We thank Thee, dear God, for men and women of all sorts that serve this community. Thank Thee for this commission and ask Thee that You would be with them this evening as they transact business, dear God, for the benefit of this people and this community. May You guide them and give them wisdom to make their proper decisions. Help us all, dear God, that, dear Father, that we could love and honor and serve Thee. And second only to that, that we would love and serve our fellow man. We know that we can only do that through Thy grace, but in so doing, we find that we answer Thy requirements that You have placed upon us, You our Heavenly Father and Creator. We ask Thee that You would forgive us of our sins and our failures in these things. In these further blessings and favors, we beg in the name of Thy dear Son. Amen.
Right hand.
Thank you, Braskin.
Next, we have two Boy Scouts from Troop Type 510, meeting at St. James Methodist Church. You're going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd invite you up to the microphone. Landon Owens and Jacob Ferris will be leading us. Thank you, sir.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Landon Owens and Jacob Ferris from Troop 510. Elder Skinner, thank you. And if anyone's watching at home, if they have a desire to provide the invocation for our City Commission meetings, please feel free to contact anybody on the commission or the clerk's office. Ms. Skinner, I almost called you Ms. Ward, I'm sorry. Ms. Shaller, please call her on.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
First item on our agenda is a brief public hearing about our tax rates for 2013-14. We're keeping the rate the same. Good night. Thank you, sir.
Good night.
I like that.
Jeff Mizel, our Chief Financial Officer.
We're experiencing technical difficulties.
Power button upside. Power upside.
Thank you.
Until the green light comes on.
I'm not a very good listener anymore. Here we go. All right. Per KRS 132.027, we are holding this public hearing to present to you the options on the rates tonight. We got the assessment from the PVA several weeks ago. As you can see, 2012, we had 3.8 billion. For 2013, we went to 3 billion, 945, 830, 020. So that's a total growth of 3.2 percent, or $131 million.
Of assessed property value in Bowling Green.
That's right. Of that growth, we had an existing property, half percent growth, or 29.2 million. And the new property made up the other 2.7 percent of the growth, or 101.8 million. So you have to look at the breakdown when you do the calculations. Here's all the options on the rates. The 2012 rate, as you know, is 20.6 cents per hundred. The compensating rate is the rate that you would calculate to... You pull out the new property and you pull out exonerations, which are home set exemptions, and you calculate a rate that would generate approximately the same amount of revenue with the new growth or without the new growth. And so basically, that's that half percent existing property that you're turning... You would... Growth in the existing property that you would not accept. And then here's your 2013 4 percent growth rate of 21.2 cents per hundred. And we are allowed to grow 4 percent a year on existing. So as you can see, the rate would have gone up to quite a bit because of the .5 percent growth in assessment. But I'm proposing that we stay right where we're at, at 20.6 cents, as we were last year. We've had this same rate since 2008 now. We've been able to manage pretty well with what we've got, with that rate, making ends This is just all of the information that goes into the calculation. I won't bore you with the calculation. That's in your packets. This is continuation, showing how you calculate the 4 percent growth rate. And then anything between that rate one and rate three of the 4 percent requires the public hearing, which is why we're here tonight. This is an interesting chart here. This is our growth, new and existing, since 1999, and the total growth along this line here. As you can see, in 2005, when we hit above the 4 percent growth in existing, we had to lower the rate from 269 to 257. Again, in '06, when we hit above 4 percent, we had to lower the rate from 257 down to 255. Same thing happened again in '07. That's probably our record-breaking year, 6.5 percent in existing growth that year. And we had to lower the rate again, from 255 to 249. Again, happened in 2008, four years in a row. We hit over 4 percent, so we had to lower the rate. And that was the year that the library tax moved off and moved over to the county-wide tax. Since then, as you can see, we've left that 20.6 rate every year since 2008. And as you can see, growth has kind of slowed down. Our existing growth has really tapered off. We're averaging about half percent over the last five years, I think, on existing. And new growth's only been about 2 to 2.5 percent growth, at best. And there's your total growth, roughly about a 3 percent total there. So kind of a historical look for the growth. I pulled this information out of the Kentucky League of Cities, today's Kentucky City. It's a really good document that came out back in July. I don't know if you all got a copy of it, but it's got a lot of averages and statistics for all of Kentucky cities. The average real estate tax of all Kentucky cities is 22.15 cents per hundred. We're at 20.6 cents per hundred, so we're below the average. And then the average personal property tax rate across the state is 28.48, and we are at 26 cents per hundred. So we're below on both of those rates. And as you can see, counties and county real estate and county personal, and there's your school districts, kind of right between our county and our city school districts on those rates, those averages. And then here's the other local tax rates that have been... Most of these, I think, have been approved by now. City schools are going to be at 75.6 cents per hundred. Warren County is at 21.7 on real estate and 26.89 on personal. County schools have come in at 42 on real estate and 42 on personal. And then here's your state. I think the state stayed the same at 12.2 and 45 cents. If you live in a city-school tax district, you're going to pay this rate here, along with our city tax rate, that'll be on the bill together. If you live in a city-annexed area, you would only see our city 20.6 cents on the bill. And then your county bill would pick up your county and your county school tax. And then everybody pays Kentucky, everybody pays county, and then depending on what school district you live in, it's where you pick up your school tax. And we did, by the way, we did a Mythbusters on that very topic that's out there on the web now, if anybody's interested in getting the facts on that. Just advertisement. General property tax information, just reminder that if you live in the city, you still are going to pay city and county taxes. Bowling Green is in the county of Warren. Taxes will be due December 31st. That's our deadline every year. And this slips up on a lot of people. If you don't get that bill paid or pokes marked by the 31st, there is a 10 percent penalty that can... Does take effect on January 1st. It's pretty steep, kind of surprises people. And every month after that, it's a half percent on any unpaid balance. Persons with mortgage escrow accounts, we do go ahead and send the city bill to the property owner, as well as to the mortgage company. Some people wonder why they get the bill if they have their mortgage or their thing in escrow, but that's the reason, just for informational purposes. And then finally, if a property owner has not received their city tax bill by November 1st, we ask that they give our office a call. Because if you own property in the city, you've got property tax bill to pay. So even if you don't receive that piece of paper, you still owe the tax. So I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mizel?
So we're going to stay with the 20.6 once again.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone present who'd like to make a comment regarding this item, please step forward to the microphone. I'm sure people are pleased that we're not raising taxes, so there'll be no other comment. We'll close this public hearing and move on to the next item on the agenda. Are there any awards or recognations, Mr. Fable?
I don't have any, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. There'll be a need for... I have two items. The first would be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B, deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. KRS 61810C, discussions of proposed repending litigation against her on behalf of the city. And KRS 61810G, discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity and discussions concerning a specific proposal. If open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second item, Mayor, I apologize to you and the commission, but there'll be a need for a late file. Our friends at the airport have received notification from the FAA that there is money available right before the end of their budget year, October 1st, and they would like us to consider an action tonight to allow them to access grant monies to do a wildlife survey, as well as to buy an industrial tractor and a snowplow. So I'd like, with your courtesy, to add that to the agenda.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next is approval amendments of the September 3 regular meeting and the special meeting on September 10 of 2013. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Is there any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
This is the time of the meeting when we offer an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. If there's an issue or comment that you need to bring to the City Commission, we offer you that opportunity at this time. If you'll raise your hand, seeing no one, we'll continue on with the second reading of ordinance 2013-32.
Ordinance Abending Code of Ordances, Ordinance Abending Chapter 23, Water and Sewer, Subchapter 23.3, Sewer System of the City of Bowling Green, Code of Ordances, as requested by the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Is there any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-141.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Jason C. Brooks to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Mr. Fable?
With the retirement of firefighter Buckaloo and the promotion of firefighter Alexander, this created an opening in prevention, promotional position in prevention. Acting on behalf of Chief Johnson is Brian O'Callaghan.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm very happy to be able to come up here and recommend firefighter Jason Brooks for the promotion of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT, specifically for the position of prevention as an investigator and an inspector. This opening, as the city manager said, was created through the promotion of Mike Alexander from our Fire Prevention Bureau. We held interviews with candidates that applied for this position. And Jason's experience as a military police officer, his experience in holding investigations and his experience within the courtroom, very quickly brought him to the forefront of this position. Jason has always proven himself to be a very self-motivated individual, a very outstanding firefighter. I believe that Jason would be a valuable addition to the Prevention Bureau, and I highly recommend him for this promotion.
Thank you, Mr. O'Callaghan. I believe Jason Brooks is in the room with us. If you'd stand up and we'll... Jason, thank you for your service and congratulations. Any discussion or comments? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Congratulations again. Next is Municipal Order 2013-142.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Christopher M. Basham to Crew Supervisor One in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. Fable?
With the retirement of Mike Wilson, there's been a vacancy created in the Park and Rec Department. I would ask Brent Belcher to come forward and to put into nomination his recommendation to fill this position.
Good evening.
Greetings, Mayor and Commissioner. Appreciate the time. Tonight, proud to recommend for your consideration, Mr. Chris Basham for his promotion. Chris has been with our department for five years, started off as a part-timer. He's assuming the role of Crew Supervisor One, depending on your agreement. Chris, as shown throughout the process, not only through his work experience, but through the interviews, we're very impressed with his horticulture experience, his greenhouse operations, and his ability for landscape design and maintenance. Chris is a recent graduate of Team Bowling Green, which is a supervisor development program within our own city. And we're just proud... We know that Chris will be part of our leadership for the future and look forward for those days. And Chris is here.
Chris, stand up so everybody can see who you are. Congratulations.[1122.23][1122.23](applause). Thank you for your hard work, too. Any comments or discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-143.
Municipal Order approving the nomination of Dr. Philip Neal to serve on the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated Board of Directors and authorizing the submission of his nomination to the Warren County Judges Executive.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is an appointment to fill the unexpired term of the previous Southern Kentucky Technical College President. He was there and has retired, and we're going to let Dr. Neal fill his place. And since the expiration is December 31st, I think we're going ahead and reappointing him through the next terms. Is that correct, Kate?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-144.
Municipal Order approving the appointments of Angela Townsend and Gina DeZelli to the Human Rights Commission.
Motion by Dunning and second by Hill. I think, Joe, you had a comment about Ms. Townsend. Is that correct?
Great appointment, Mayor. And I'm sure the other lady will do a great job for the Human Rights Commission. Ms. Townsend is a Bowling Green lady, and she retired from the Warren County School System a few years back, and I look forward to working with her.
And Ms. DeZelli is a member of the Bosniak community, and she was one who coordinated last year the Bosniak Convention that was in town with 15,000 guests to our community. Well-qualified to be involved in that.
She's also on Lady Feathers International. And serving on that conference, too.
That's true. Any other comments or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-145.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of John Kelly and Patsy Sloan to the Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority Incorporated.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. This is a reappointment of two individuals that have stuck through all the difficult times with the TIF project and want to see it through to its completion. Any other comments or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-146.
Municipal Order approving the continuation of an agreement with Western Kentucky University for providing a leaf composting system for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Dunning. Mr. Fable?
Thank you, Mayor. Since 1988, the City of Bowling Green and Western Kentucky University have been involved in a creative collaboration to compost primarily yard waste and leaves produced by the City of Bowling Green. This agreement, like I said, has been ongoing for almost 20 years. That rate that they charge us, fee for service, last year was increased, or 2012 was increased to 45,000. Prior to that, it was static for many years. They also, which is unusual, share with us 25 percent of the composting proceeds. Our joint labor produces revenues of $11,486, and we receive approximately $28.71. It's our understanding, and this is great news to me until Jeff wrote the memo, that majority of this money goes to a scholarship. On its pure business merits, it's obvious, least to us, that this arrangement is in the city's interest. But I think there's other collateral issues that some of you wanted to discuss, and I can comment further if that's helpful.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kevin, for those comments. As people know, I was opposed to this resolution back a year ago when we voted and passed this to pay Western this amount of money to compost our leaves. Looking at it from two different perspectives, yes, from a business standpoint, I do believe it's good interest to the City of Bowling Green for this. But I believe the City of Bowling Green should receive something for the funds that it produces for that scholarship fund. I would like to see Western Kentucky University name this scholarship after the City of Bowling Green, that it be placed in our name, and perhaps the city employees and/or the city's children, the employees' children, get preference to this scholarship because of the leaves that the city is producing and taking to Western. They're able to have these funds, and I believe it's in the best interests of Bowling Green to receive credit for those funds generated. I would like, if it's the wish of the commission, to support a resolution next time, requesting the naming of that scholarship on behalf of the city and to give special treatment to the city employees and/or their children for those scholarships to attend Western Kentucky University.
Hang on just a second here.
Do we need to amend the way this particular order is written tonight to include the Commissioner's desires?
It's up to Ms. Hill. She wants to make it as a form of amendment, but I understood you're asking... That's what I was trying to write down here, asking for a resolution on the next agenda.
Well, I guess I'd like to hear from Gene, what's in the best interest of the city. Should we amend this one and move forward, or...
Let me focus on this one. You don't say something. You know, one thing, we've actually looked at this, I'm not sure there's actually a formal contract attached to this, so it's really not in language that we can go in and amend. Second thing, I've not been involved in this, I'm not too sure there's been any discussion with Western about this. I'm not too sure what type of scholarship this is, you know, if it's connected to one particular school, or what Western position be. I'm not really sure I'm really in favor of trying to amend this, because we're not really sure exactly at this point what we're amending. And I gather what you said a minute ago, you just wanted to kind of... What I gather what you said a few minutes ago was maybe a resolution next time, expressing the city's wish that Western do this, or do you want that as, I guess, a vote here from this board? If you want that a condition of this order, then probably ought to amend this and make it a condition. If it's more of a, let's go ahead and approve this tonight, but come back in a couple of weeks with a resolution, you know, expressing your wish that they would do that, then I think that's a second way of doing it. I'm not too sure what the field here is, whether they want to make that mandatory as part of this, or just, we would like you to do this, at least to look at it. And, you know, that may be the way to go. That way, they'll give everybody time, Southwestern, too, to see, because I'm not really sure, I guess it's, I'm not sure exactly how much money this generates.
Eleven thousand.
Yeah, I saw that, but then half, quarter, that comes to us. I'm not too sure what they do with the rest. Like you, like Kevin, I didn't know they had a scholarship that they were using to support this with already. But I guess it's up to the board whether you want to make this a mandatory part of this agreement, or just express your intent, or your wish at some point that Western would look into renaming that scholarship and committing it. At one point, I need to decide if you want to do that, is I heard part of it maybe give a, what, city employees', children's preference, or...
Either to the employees and/or their children.
Okay.
It's up to the Commissioners, you all know how, what I feel on this issue.
Well, I think it makes good business sense to try to continue this relationship with Western Kentucky University. And I think maybe we probably would be better off to keep them separate at this point. And I fully support your resolution, so I think that's an excellent idea. But I'm prepared to go ahead and make a decision on this tonight, and then we could talk about the resolution at the next meeting.
When does the contract go into play for this year, Kevin?
Gene, you can answer that. I'm not even sure there's a contract. It's a relationship.
Yeah, I think it's basically an annual thing. That's one thing we talked about today. Maybe one thing we need to do is actually memorize this as some type of written agreement, too, unless there's one out there I haven't seen, you know, with effective date. And maybe one thing, tell me what you want to do, too, but, you know, is this something you want to see every year? We have a lot of contracts that we do on a continuing basis. They're good for a year, automatically renewable unless somebody, you know, votes to cancel. This may be one type of agreements that you may want to do that with, as, too, instead of coming up every year. But since it's on the agenda now, I assume that's effective for this, you know, I guess for the leaves that are starting to fall now.
And by dividing the question, we maintain the primacy of business, and Melinda has a valid point. It would give us on the commission and staff an opportunity to meet with different people privately prior to that October meeting and have discussions to show the importance of this. And this way, you would speak with one voice, which is always powerful, through a resolution at one sometime.
So what are you saying we do as it is here?
Yes.
Go ahead and approve?
Yes.
And then go back next... And then go back next time with a resolution after you've had discussions with Western?
The questions would be, I don't know who to have discussions, who you and I should have discussions with, I'm not sure if it's at a department level, I don't know where scholarships come from at Western, is it a Ransville thing, is it a?
We'll find out.
Well, I think I would start with Mr. Rudolph, who the letter came from.
Yeah, I don't know if the department has the power to issue scholarships to.
I would say it'd be bumped up the ladder from there.
Yeah, okay.
But I would at least give the courtesy to the person who sent us the letter requesting this continuation, to start with them.
Another option is, you know, we can assume everything's fine and move forward and have like a work session, ask Western to come and make it a bigger deal, and have a discussion of it. I'd rather just divide the question, we've been doing this since 1998, we always took pride in that the newest element is a desire for us to share in the fruit of that labor. That's the newest element, so I think that should be as part of a divided question. I don't know if that makes any sense to you all.
I like the idea of approaching them, I'm not all that hung up on having a work session. I mean, I think it's pretty simple in our request as to what the Commissioner wants in this particular motion, so.
Okay.
That's my thought, she can speak.
I'd agree, and I would like to thank the city for all the work they have done on this issue, researching it and giving us all the history on it, thank you.
I want to thank Jeff, he did yeoman's work on this and did all the statistical analysis, and it's obvious that it's in our, our best interest, but there is also courtesy that should be explored.
Okay, so we'll be voting on municipal order as it's presented and giving you time to contact them for a resolution the next time.
Maybe you can help me with that, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denney?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-147.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of Clearlane Enhanced De-icer from Cargill De-Icing Technology in the amount of $47,455.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebo.
As Gene mentioned, fall's just around the corner, right behind fall is winter, we're lucky we're not in a snow belt, and we get an average of anywhere from an inch up to 11 year, 11 inches a year. We fight that with a common, unique product called Clearlane, which includes rock salt as well as magnesium chloride, which provides a potent solution for the fighting of ice, which is especially a problem in our area. We've researched, as Jeff's memo mentions, various alternatives, we still like this product and asked you to approve this year's purchase, up to $47,455, which is budgeted.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denney?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-148.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-03 for the Police Department Fence Project from Contractors Corporation of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the total amount of $129,970.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Denning and second by Hill, Mr. DeFebo.
Well, one of the Achilles' heel of our beautiful police department facility is the fact it doesn't have a segregated parking lot for the officers, and almost anybody can walk through that parking lot. We thought it was time to end that practice, and I've urged Doug, and he's found the money along with Kate, to go out and put a fence up and an entrance system, and to try to mirror the work that is done with Skypack and all the other nice accents downtown. So we would like to enclose the officer's parking lot and provide greater safety, and we had three bidders, one was not responsive, we're asking that you approve Contractors Corporation, who we're told is a reliable contractor. Jeff Lashley or Doug are here, if you have any questions.
And it will look similar to the one at the Pioneer Cemetery.
Yes, that was the vision. We thought, you know, we want to help downtown too, so we did the cemetery, and looks nice, so we thought, okay, the police department needs this, so let's do it for them too.
Any comments or discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denney?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2013-149.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2013-54 for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract from Train U.S. Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky, in the total amount of $845,010.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFebo.
As we, as the Commission knows, and we have talked about it in various retreats and other meetings, the city is in the process of putting together a work profile and program to improve the NCS and offices, as well as the annex. We're out to design right now with the architect on part of that, but the first part involves energy savings in those buildings. We also have learned in our own budget that we also have other energy needs, and we discovered this creative program through the state of Kentucky that allows guaranteed energy savings. Brent, since he speaks clearly and simply, is going to explain it to you.
And slowly for us, right?
I don't know about that. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. DeFebo. Mayor, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about bid number 2013-54, which is our energy performance contracting. Now, I think you all should have a copy of the presentation I provided in the Michelle earlier. To give you a little bit of history of what the city's done for its energy efficient improvements, we were the first city in Kentucky to use energy performance contracting. We actually partnered with Train in 2000 and did some HVAC and lighting improvements to some other city facilities. That project's been complete now for some years, but that was the kind of first step. And what the performance contracting allows, it's allowed under KRS, and what it allows is a city to bond a project and use the energy savings from that project to pay for the bond. Now, in this case, we won't be issuing the bond, the city's in a position where we don't have to do that, but we still get that luxury of getting that guarantee, and I'll talk a little bit more about that guarantee. The second major step that we had was whenever we received Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Funds out of the Stimulus Act of 2009, we received just under $600,000 and used just under $300,000 to make energy efficient improvements to 22 city-owned buildings. And a lot of that was insulation, lighting, the lights that you see in here today, the lights that you see in the annex, that's what paid for those types of things. We did some HVAC, but it was very limited. Off of that, we were able to generate additional $12,000 in TVA rebates. We got some rebates for the annex project and also for the gymnasium down at Parks and Rec. So that was another big step. Well, now we're here to talk about the next big step. As Mr. DeFebo talked about, as some of our space planning for administrative needs as we move forward, we felt like this was an opportunity to kind of partner those two and capitalize on this opportunity. So what we're doing is we're recommending a war to Train U.S. Train is the subsidiary of Ingersoll Rand, they are a publicly traded company, it's a very large company. Our representatives are out of Louisville, and they're here today, Mr. Anthony Wright and Mr. Mike Anderson, they did make the trip down this evening to be with you all this evening. They are certified by NASCO, and I'm going to have to read this so I don't mess this up. It's the National Association of Energy Services Company. They are the, we had three bidders for this project, they are one of the two that are certified by NASCO. It was not a requirement, but we do put some value in that certification. Additionally, they've completed $55 million worth of energy performance contracts, and over 4.4 million square feet of projects are covered, and that's in the last five years. So this is something that they are very committed to, this is an industry that they're very strong in, especially here locally in Kentucky. Total cost of this project is $845,000, and that's really split up into two things. One thing is the initial capital, that's what it's going to cost to design, build, install, the upfront cost. The rest of that is the ongoing service cost. There is an annual service cost that goes along with this, then spread out over the life of the guarantee, whether it be 15 or 20 years, and we still have the final negotiations to finish out before we actually sign the contract for that, and there is a small cost for that. And, and I'll talk a little bit here in a second about what that does and what that cost is for.
Before you go, Brent, that $109,000, is that amortized over that 20-year period?
Yes, sir. That's spread over a 20-year period. So I want to talk a little bit about what Train has done up until this point. So they've come through, they did the RFP process, and they did the analysis of our utility bills for all the facilities contained, they did a survey and inspection of buildings and equipment, so they know what they're getting into, they've seen the equipment, they've seen the buildings, nothing should come as a shock to them. They've also analyzed the building use, because how a building operates changes how its energy is used. You take an administrative building that operates from 8 to 5, and then it shuts down from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 the next morning, you know, you really reduce your energy demand. However, you take a police department, which pretty much runs 24/7, 365 days a year, that's the energy use is different, it's all about the use of the building. So they took all that and also modeled what they're proposing, and that's how they come up with the energy savings. So then they can see what are they modeling, what are they proposing, and see what the impact of those, of those propositions are for our energy savings moving forward. So what they still have to do, and what this, what this agreement would allow them to do moving forward, is to actually engineer and design the system improvements. So they would be designing the system, buying the system, building the, I mean, buying the equipment, and installing it. There is another option here that we could have taken, where we split this up into five separate contracts, we hire mechanical engineers for five separate contracts, we buy the equipment, however, we didn't think that that was useful, we felt like we could package this deal, take it to, or Train come to us, and we could make this deal work and save the city money, and I'll talk about that. And the oversight and improvement of the energy usage, that's really that 20-year term that I talked about. They have to meet that guarantee each year. If they don't meet that guarantee, then they write the city a check. So they establish what the guarantee is, we approve it, and then they have to meet that each year. And what we're paying for in that ongoing service fee is a measurement and verification, and it's about $3,000 a year. Now, our guaranteed savings are about $25,000. We felt like that guarantee had enough value to us that the $3,000 was worth the cost of having that guarantee moving forward. The benefits of this, like I said, the guaranteed savings, we could split this contract out, we could hire the engineers, we could buy the equipment, we could issue four or five bids, and not have a guaranteed one. And whenever the project's done, the engineer's gone, the contractor's gone, everybody's gone. Here, we have a 20-year commitment, they're partners with us in this project as we move forward for the life of this project. The other thing is consistency of equipment. We've got a lot of train equipment across city facilities now, so we have the ability to use the smart technology that I've talked about here in a second to link that equipment up and give us the opportunity to see what it is, and whenever you have consistency of equipment, you also have consistency of maintenance, you have the consistency of maintaining that property over a period of time. The smart technology is something that the city does not have right now. We do have controls, we do have setbacks, but that's like having a programmable thermostat in your home. You can set it to turn the air down while I'm gone in the day, turn it back up whenever I get home at night. That's about the extent of our smart technology. And I'll give you an example of what the smart technology does. It actually communicates with the HVAC system and the overall energy usage, so you get real-time data, you get information of what's going on, if there's a sensor that goes off, you can pinpoint where the issue is, send someone to fix that one issue instead of troubleshooting the entire system, and you're paying that serviceman to do that. So part of the savings that they're guaranteeing is also the operational savings. And I'll give you my, my example, I built the house a few years ago, and was going through the winter, got a really high electric bill, and I thought, well, it was just cold last week, you know, no big deal, I'll just move forward. So the next month comes along, got another really high bill, about $300, I thought, okay, something's wrong. But I still had heat, everything went fine, never noticed anything inside the building, inside my home. So I called my HVAC guy, he comes out and said, yep, your condenser's bad, it's under warranty, but you still got to pay parts and labor, and you also paid two months utility bills, you should have called me two months ago. But I didn't have anything to tell me that there was an issue, I had to wait till I got the utility bills to see, hey, there's an issue. That's how we operate right now, we have to wait till we see the utility bills. The smart technology allows us to get that information right away. The other thing the smart technology does, if you're familiar with demand power, if you hit demand power, demand, demand power is at a higher rate, so you have peak charges. So whenever power companies are generating power, and everybody shows up to work across Bowling Green or across south-central Kentucky at 8 o'clock, there's a power that has to go up. When you start hitting those demand charges, that power goes up. The smart technology allows us to control when our equipment is going and off, and when it fluctuates, when it maintains, so that we can stay out of that demand zone, because that demand zone is an expensive zone of power. So your goal is to always try to stay under that as much as possible. The capital cost, by working with the manufacturer, we get to buy directly from the manufacturer. If we go with the other option that I talked about previously, we're paying a general contractor, we're paying a mechanical engineer, we're paying a subcontractor, who then buys it from the manufacturer. Every time something touches somebody's hands, there's a cost to it. Here, we're buying it directly from Train, so we get a reduced cost on the actual purchase of the equipment, and they handle the installation and oversight of it. And I already talked about the long-term partnership of them being committed to this because they have a guarantee on the line, and if they don't meet that guarantee, then Mr. Wright has to go to his boss and explain why, he has to write the City of Bowling Green a check for the difference. And I'm open to any questions, I know that that was a lot of information.
Can you elucidate the idea about the grant possibility?
Sometime back, I think it was in June, I'd submitted a grant to the Department for Local Government for a Energy Efficiency Conservation Grant, that was funded through a TVA, TVA settlement. We have not heard official word from that, but in communication with the state and some of other grant peers from around the state, I do know that they are putting a high priority on performance contracting. They wanted to make sure, because they only had a limited amount of money, they wanted to make sure that it was going to communities that were making smart decisions with their investments in energy efficient technologies. Something else that I don't know that I talked about earlier, that I want to make sure you understand, the stuff we're proposing to buy, we were already planning to buy. These were expenses we were going to have, no matter what, they were either in our CIP or they were a project that we were already moving forward with. The equipment that's listed in the RFP is not an additional equipment, it's replacing an existing that has reached its useful life, that we're going to have these expenses no matter what. We just feel like this is an opportunity to, like I said before, bundle those together and take advantage of this opportunity and do them all under one larger project.
Do you talk about the value added for the police department and its problems there?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo. Part of this is also what they call recommissioning. And recommissioning is more of a diagnostic tool of looking at a piece of equipment, seeing how it's operating, and doing the controls and smart technology to make sure that it's operating to its, to its maximum capacity. As most of you are aware, the police department with its addition, the 2004 addition, has had some issues in their HVAC. You have two different systems that really aren't communicating to each other. We have the same problem in this building. Whenever we try to cool this room off before meetings, we could have another heater over here running to run other parts of the building, they're not communicating. This will allow those things to communicate. They've already done a study, Train has already done a study on the police department and found that there's sufficient capacity to meet the demand there, it's just getting everything to communicate to each other so it all operates in balance. HVAC is, is more art than science, it's all about achieving a balance of how your temperature, your humidity, and your air pressure regulates so that you have comfort levels in a space.
Hey, Brent, I want to, I want to touch on the cost recovery too, what part of that $8.45 we're going to recover over the 20 years?
I think it's listed in the memo about the total energy savings over the 20 years, and that's why I didn't put it in the actual presentation.
But?
But, that number is? 665,000 would be guaranteed as energy savings moving forward over the life of the, of the agreement.
Brent?
I'd just like to say, I like seeing the manufacturer putting their money where their mouth is, or, you know, this is, it's a unique concept to, to promote their products and assure that they're going to operate in the right manner, so I commend them for that, and I commend you for looking at this type of thing. The one question that I do have, you said that an analysis of the building use was done as part of the RFP. What happens if the, the use of that building or that facility changes during the operation of this contract, say for its total different use or remodel, something of that nature takes place? How's that happen?
You've already projected for that, right?
Yeah, we've already projected for one of the buildings with a, with a proposed use, and that's part of the mod- that's part of the modeling. So, we had to look at, if you have a building that is unoccupied, then you have a very low energy demand for that building. So, part of the analysis for what is the use is based on a projected use. So, it's not comparing it to current use, it's based on a projected use at par. So, if we had a vacant building currently that we might use in the future that was part of this, then that analysis has already been inputted as part of this review. Now, if we thought that the police station in 15 years was not going to be the police station, then that would just have to be a separate conversation, because for all intensive purposes, between staff and Train, we believe that the police station will continue to be the police station and operate in a similar fashion as it is today. We also did interviews with their last five clients, and most of them have been schools. If you look through their previous client list, schools are very involved in this type of technology, and if you look at our local school systems, they're the pioneers and the leaders across energy efficiency across the world. And all of them have had nothing but praise for Train, and said that their energy savings are far and above what was guaranteed. So, we feel like we'll still be, that there is sufficient capacity between the guarantee and what the actual, to meet that.
Who's gonna monitor the smart technology?
It'd be a combination of city staff and Train. They have on-call representatives, so if we have issues, we can call them up, and they can dial in. It's all a web-based platform, so they can pull up and they can see what's going on in our buildings, see what the issues are, diagnose it, and then we can have our local service reps come out and actually fix the problem. Because we already have an existing maintenance contract with the local HVAC firm, they would still be the ones maintaining. So, if a controller goes out or something like that, they would still be that. But Train can actually dial in through a web-based module and see what's going on. Our staff could also do that, too. If it's to the point of it's just a signal error that is something simple that we can take care of, we'll take care of it. If it's something more advanced, Train would have the ability to tap in. And what that does is that saves somebody from driving down here to look at it. Now, they can just pull it up on a computer screen, walk us through on the phone, say, okay, this is the problem, this is what we need to do, here's the fix, as opposed to, well, I'll be down there next Thursday, it'll be $100.50 a mile.
The total cost of the capital is $735,000. Who made the decision about what products or equipment to install?
Well, that is their proposal. So, that would be, that is what is proposed. Whenever we issued the RFP, we kinda did it as an open-ended response. We want to do performance contracting, come in, take a look at our buildings, take a look at our equipment, and see what you propose. So, the proposals were different. Some didn't go as far. Train went further, they looked at more buildings, and took advantage of more opportunities to find energy savings. Some of the other proposals didn't go as far. You know, they might just look at one or two aspects, and that was it. So, it was really Train who said, these are the things that we believe you need to look at. And for the majority of the things, we completely agreed. If not all of them, because we already knew of a large project that we were planning, and then we already had CIPs issued for three or four of the other ones.
And your interviews with their previous customers, what was their experience on change orders?
No change orders.
It scared me when I saw the energy savings contract, because the only ones I was familiar with is those people that come in and say, you know, you caulk your windows, and seal the plugs, and then you pay me $50, and if you don't do it, then you didn't, you know, it'll save you $50, and that's what you owe me, and it's a little bit scary to me.
And then that's not what this is, so I want to make sure that the commissioner is aware that that's not what this venture is.
It looks like you've done quite a lot of detail on it, I appreciate the work.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
The vision for this came to, Kate and I went to KLC conference, and this was the main presentation. Then we met Anthony at various KLC things, and he jumped ship to Train. We just thought it was smart to tie all our needs together, because we either pay now or we pay later, so we thought it'd be, well, smart to pay now and do it efficiently. So, we're recommending it, we think it's a good deal. We didn't go easy, we held out a long time, because we were like you, we were skeptical, there was no free ride, so. But we think it's a, it meets the test of credibility, and I think will produce a benefit for us.
Thank you.
I've got a comment about Train, but that's a spoiler.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-150.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance for 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Funds, in the amount of $26,052.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Fibo.
This is what is turning out to be an annual program. This year is $26,052 available through the Byrne JAG funds. We'll split that with the county, our $13,026 will be used to continue our efforts to put in-car cameras in all of our rolling police patrol cars. Jennifer Nash is here, who did the work on the grant, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-151.
Municipal Order authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Federal Transportation Assistance under the Section 5339 program through the Federal Transit Administration in the amount not to exceed $115,210.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip, Mr. Fibo.
This is under the category of asking your permission to apply. This is to apply in a discretionary bus and bus facility program. We want to ask for money to purchase 12 new buses, to rehab two larger buses from the city of Louisville, and to install solar LED on bus stations, bus shanties.
It's a 12-passenger bus, not 12 buses.
Oh, 12, I'm sorry, forgive me. I'm just, I'm getting old.
You had somebody have heart attack in the audience here.
I'm getting old, sorry. We have to put in 20%, but we can use our toll credits, so it's basically at par to us, and it will help community action, fulfilling its mission to provide public transportation here. Cheryl Allen's here, if you want to chat about it, but I think we generally got it.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Go get the buses if you need, but not 12. Municipal Order 2013-152.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet, Division of Forestry, in the amount not to exceed $6,100 to purchase tree inventory and management software.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Fibo.
Last meeting, Jay Daughery schooled us on the Emerald Ash Borer Plague that is facing Bowling Green in the state of Kentucky. The state has made available grant money. We have been awarded $6,100 to inventory our ash trees, as well as our tree inventory. Again, this is at par, we'll use the 50% offset from city staff and other contributions to the program.
Any comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-153.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of various streets in Mount Victor Old Town subdivision, section 5.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Fibo.
As the commissioner knows, when a subdivision is completed, they ask to be included in our maintenance domain. By doing so, tonight, you will add 462 linear feet of roadway into our city domain. Jeff and his staff have inspected it, and are staking their careers that it's correct.
Same thing for the next one, too.
Same thing for the next one. So, if you want to take those as a dual, that would be fine.
Any comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-154.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of various streets in Hunt Family Village Commercial subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny, any comments or discussion?
Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2013-33.
Ordinance relating to property tax rates. Ordinance setting 2013 property tax rates, franchise tax rates, and improvement assessment rates, and setting forth guidelines for payment, penalty, and interest.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denny and second by Hill.
Earlier in the meeting, Jeff did a show and tell about 2013 property tax rate. It's staff recommendation that we leave the rate the same as last year, taking some pride for all of us that we are able to operate this organization on the amount of money that people give us, and we want to keep that the same.
I thank the staff for the hard work in making sure that we live within our means and our budget, and I think Katie can quote all of us on the commission, because we're excited not to raise taxes. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-155.
Municipal Order approving lease agreement with R. Justin Shepherd, doing business at Spencer's Coffee House, for lease of a portion of the public sidewalk located in front of 915 College Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Fibo.
The hottest thing out there today is people wanting to use sidewalks to serve food and drink. We're here tonight with another request, and I'll let Gene lay it out for you, it's from Spencer's.
This is one more typical request that we get, if you, I saw in the paper a few weeks ago that Spencer's, I guess for first time, picked up an alcohol license. I think most of the tables are gonna be in the back, but they approached the city about being able to put a couple of tables on College Street in front of the business as well, to be able to provide alcohol there. For them to be able to do that, we have to lease the sidewalk to them, because that becomes part of the lease premises. We drafted a normal typical lease agreement we do with everybody else for sidewalk cafes about liability, keeping it clean, keeping it quiet, keeping it neat, the same agreement we do with, what, four, five, six, or 10? I mean, I've lost track of how many we have down on the square, but this is just another one of our typical sidewalk leases.
Any comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-156.
Municipal Order holding in abeyance the administration and enforcement of the Chapter 99 Community Development Plan, Urban Renewal Plan, for the historic Bowling Green Revitalization Project area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Fibo.
Sometime ago, in the city of Bowling Green, there was what is known as a Chapter 99 plan for the urban renewal area, which laid out a vision for what downtown has been. It was part of a planning requirement. Since that time, there's been a lot of changes, obviously, in downtown, and the Chapter 58 and the development with the TIFT has almost made this plan, if not obsolete, certainly unneeded at this point. We've had a lot of staff discussion, and it's our recommendation that we put this in abeyance. I'm gonna have Mr. Childers come up again and lay out the argument why.
Thank you, Mr. Fibo, may I commission this again? The Chapter 99 plan was approved in 2003, and this was really a planning tool for the city to lead the redevelopment of downtown. This gave us the authority to purchase property, declare property blighted, and set about certain prohibited uses in the Chapter 99 area. The Chapter 99 area is generally from the river to 8th Street. That's kind of, now, I think you all have a map in your packet there, but that's kind of the area that we're talking about. And as Mr. Fibo said, the TIFT district now, upon its expansion in 2008, I think is the date, kind of encompassed that. The city used it as a tool for purchasing property. We set about certain goals that we wanted to achieve. One of those was the development of Circus Square, we completed it. One of those was the development of Lee Square, we completed it. One of those was the development of Elderly Housing Complex, we completed it. One of those was the goal of developing Riverfront Park, we completed it. We feel that it's kind of reached its life, however, in discussions with the Planning Commission, they still believe that it has some usefulness. However, since it is set idle, the last time it was before you all was just over a year ago, and it was the same thing. Before that, it was 2004, whenever there was an amendment, the last planned amendment was in 2004. With the changeover in downtown, the authorities of downtown, the responsibilities of downtown, we think it's really good for us to kind of take the opportunity to work with the Planning Commission, go through the public hearings, because we can't just change it. We have to have public hearings, it has to go to the Planning Commission, there's a process to do that change. So, we'd like to have that opportunity to meet with the Planning Commission, work through what some of those changes need to be, and bring back to you a recommendation for the Chapter 99 plan. It does have a term on it, it's 20 years from approval, so it is set to expire in January 2023, and Mr. Harmon and I have worked on this for just over a year now, just kind of working through different issues. Whenever you have something that's kind of set for that long, it's gonna take some time for us to go and to go back and amend any of the future land uses or prohibited uses that are contained in the plan. If you have any questions.
If I may add, make sure you understand, this is just holding in abeyance, it's not terminating it. I think as part of the discussions with the Planning Commission, I think we also need to bring in a TIFT board, meet with them as well, to get their inputs, to see what we think we need to amend, what we need to do away with, what we need to keep. Then, once we do that, we'll go through the public hearing process, go through the Planning Commission process, and then bring those amendments back to you. Because I think probably what's gonna happen at this is, now, it may take a while, but maybe, what, four to six months? Probably during that timeframe, we'll bring it back to you with proposed amendments to the plan.
Any other questions?
Comments or discussion? Thank you, Brent. Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-157.
Municipal Order approving cost of living adjustment and increase in annual lease payment related to lease agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. Fibo.
I don't know, folks out there would be surprised to know that holes 4, 5, 6, 11, 12, 13, 14, and the turf facility of the Crosswinds Golf Course are essentially on airport property, and that we lease that to run our golf course. So, for about $6,226 a year, we've worked on an arrangement for the airport to allow us to continue to use that land for golf course. The lease is up, and we're here to ask you to renew unless we want to give the...
Well, I want to clarify, this is leasing, this is, it's every 20 years, but every 20 years, we have the option to extend it another 20, and this goes into perpetuity. years, we have the option to extend it another 20, and this goes into perpetuity. We actually extended it for 20 years, five years ago, but the lease agreement provides that every five years, the airport has the ability to recalculate a cost of living average increase over that five years and propose an increase in the rate. So that's why we're here tonight, proposing an increase from $6,149 per year to $6,226 and 16 cents per year. So we're looking at, my math real quick, what's that, $125 a year increase?
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And the late file we had earlier, municipal order 2013-158.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting a grant agreement among the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board, the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, and